Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we are here to the presentation of the 2025-26 proposed local budget. Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you have copies of the budget, it's also been posted online. Of course, as my budget message, you can read that at your leisure. Our goals this year, um, simple, and our three most important reasons for what we do, students, staff, and safety. And that's what our budget will focus around. Do want to go back a little bit and remind you of the portion of the budget that we are here tonight to discuss. As you can see, that is our total budget and how different funding sources are allocated, whether it's capital, local, federal, and state. We are here tonight to talk about both local and capital. Local is about nineteen percent of our overall budget, according to last year's numbers, and capital is about two percent of our overall budget. When you look at expenses and how they break down within our current expense, you can see that roughly sixty-eight percent of our current expenditures go to salary. And you can see the remaining breakdown there are capital outlay, purchase services, charter school payments, and supplies and materials. So of that nineteen percent, that is the breakdown of that specific pot of money.
Those numbers, are those code numbers? Or what is that?
That is code numbers, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So when you see chart of accounts, that's kind of what that refers to.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So I wanted to provide for you sort of a year-over-year look at the county's overall budget and our allocation of that budget over time. Because I do think that it's important to see that while we do appreciate the additional funds that we received last year, when you take a look over time, we did receive less of the county's overall budget than we have in the past. And I also think it's important to take a look at other counties, and these counties that we looked at were specifically compared to us in the Evergreen Performance Audit as those most similar to our makeup as far as our school system and community. And you can see that how much those counties spend on their school system out of their overall budget. So last year, we received twenty-three and a half million dollars, which was roughly twenty-point-eight percent of the county's overall budget. You can see over on the left, the breakdown of other counties, which is an average of twenty-five-point-one percent.
And that's what we've been compared to as far as...
Performance Audit.
Yeah, okay. So, but theirs is much higher.
Yeah, and the performance also, it took into account when they chose which county it was comparison, they looked at this, that we, to make sure we had some of the same demographics.
Yeah. So, or Chatham's is thirty-four percent.
So, based on last year's budget information and how I found this information, I went to each individual's county website. I pulled up their budget information from last year that was approved by their commissioners, and I looked at how much they allocated towards their public schools, divided that by their overall budget, and that's what it amounts to. Just a point of reference, Moore County is one of the counties in the state that has a fixed budget that the county and the schools have agreed to. So every year, the county, the public schools in Moore County receive thirty-eight-point-five percent of the county's revenue.
Just to clarify that, that's, so in lieu of like, an ADM-type fixed rate, they're just fixed rate of county revenues is how they do that, right?
Correct. And my understanding is that is based on projected budget, not actual. So of the county's projected budget, Moore County allocates thirty-eight-point-five percent to the public schools.
Over the last five years, we've reduced the amount we're getting by five percent?
That is correct.
Just to note, our high was in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. It looks like.
The new schools that were built?
Yes, ma'am. That would have been when WB Wicker opened up, which would have, which would account for that increase right there. But as you can see, over time, that number has declined. So next, I'm going to go into current budget, and I'm first going to show you the historical allocations of what we have received from the county. This is sort of a repeat from what you saw on the previous slide, but just going back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, you can see the allocation, and then the percent increase on the far right is year-over-year. So again, last year, we did receive a six-point-eight percent increase over the previous year, but when you take a look at what we received based on their overall revenue, it was, it was down. I think it's also important to take a look at our request, which is that second line, if you go from left to right, that's been the county's request, and you can see what we were actually allocated and any special allocations that took place.
CE. What is that? Allocation.
Current expense.
Current expense.
Current expense.
So I think it's important we talk about our budget challenges that we have facing us. We do have continued operational increases, which I will go into. It's always a challenge to retain, recruit, and reward a high-quality workforce, which is important for our students. And I think we've seen a lot of that play out in recent months that we certainly need to address. Supplementing program areas to using local funding that we just don't receive enough funds to carry, either with state or federal. We've had an increased services and funding provided to charter schools, which I will go into more specifically. And then, once we get to our capital request, we will talk about aging facilities and rising maintenance costs and trying to address that. So just looking at our operational increases, you can see that both all utility calls, custodial supplies, supplements that are paid using local funds, and insurance, which includes cyber workers' comp and property, have all gone up significantly over the past year, which I'm sure you've seen in your own households, and the school system is no different.
Dr. Dawson, FYI, I learned today that you didn't really get another electrical increase.
I believe it. And just so you all know how we come up with these numbers is, we take the average increase over the past few years, we take a look at the first six months of this year, and try to project as closely as we can what we think our cost would be for this year. Retaining, recruiting, and rewarding a high-quality workforce. I know that we have talked about this for many, many years as a school district, but I hope that this visual will hit home. Wanted to take a look at just how many teachers we have lost to other districts since September first of this year. And that chart shows the breakdown of where those individuals have indicated on their exit report that they are leaving us, going to work in these counties. You can see that the largest amount that we have lost have gone to counties that have a significantly higher average supplement. Also, in the chart there, you can see that the counties in red, which are basically every county to our north, does have a higher supplement. And I think that's something that we have to address. I think something that we hear often is, for a relatively small county, we already have a higher supplement, and that's true, but we have no choice if we want to compete.
So who pays for their supplement? Is it paid out of their own funds? Does it come from the county?
It's funded county commissioners.
So they get enough in their budget to cover that, any, or the larger supplements?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, Dr. Dawsonbach, it might be worth noting here, when we talk supplements, that the plan that was provided by Evergreen factored in cost of living, right? So the plan that we've presented, we're not trying to pay Wake County supplement, we're just trying to pay an appropriately even amount for, for our cost of living.
Correct. One of the great things that the Evergreen Audit did is, we know that we're not Wake County, we're not Chatham County, we're not trying to be, and we don't necessarily, we're not able to afford that. But what the chart shows that I'll get to a little bit later is Evergreen's recommendation based on the cost of living in Lee County. As I mentioned earlier, we supplement using local funds, other program areas, and these are all program areas that are very important and needed in our school system. The amounts listed in blue are covered, either by state or federal funding. All of those costs that you see in orange are what we supplement using local funding. So you can see that both AIG, ESL, which is English as a Second Language, preschool, and mental health are covered with local funds. I'm going to dig into a couple of those a little bit more. In the past, for the past several years, from the Sandhills Mental Health Grant, we have received a little over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. We were able to use that funds to pay for two and a half of our three mental health social work positions. So obviously, we lost that funding, so we had to supplement that locally. The decision was made by DHHS to consolidate that Sandhills Mental Health, and because of that, they pulled back that grant. Just so that you all know, the annual amount that we do spend on mental health and our mental health team is a little over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year.
Now, do, is that supplemented by the county commissioners at all? Don't they provide so many for the mental health?
To my knowledge, that... No, that, that amount is what we lost.
But we didn't do away with the positions? We kept the positions, but we filled the gap?
We filled the gap with local funding, yes, ma'am.
We had not anticipated that, correct?
No, we, we did not. I mean, we started to hear about the possible consolidation about mid-year last year, but did not realize that the funding would go away with it. But it did, but we see the importance of having those people in our district.
Where's, where is that money coming from?
It's within our local funding.
So what is not being funded, then? That was project, that we had budgeted to fund?
Was it the one ninety-three? Well, that was the grant?
Right. So what we were able to do is, if you recall, there were several positions with social work and guidance counselors that were added using COVID funds. As folks either retired or resigned, we did not fill those positions because we knew that COVID funding was going to go away. And so these positions, we shifted and then did not fill some that were filled by COVID because, again, that month, that revenue source was going to dry up of September of this past year.
And again, this is a service that we provide because we feel like it's needed, but it's not necessarily required by law.
It is not required, but I certainly cannot imagine...
Not for that.
...a school system without mental health support.
So if we...
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that at all. But other counties, and all the trainings that you and I both have attended as well, and other counties, the DHS within the county help provide that support. That falls under the mental health, that's why you have mental health officers and stuff at a county level. That, that's what I'm getting at. It's not, I don't think we need them because we definitely need them.
Right, but maybe finding funding from, or help with that, for sure.
Because if we didn't provide it, who would provide it?
Right.
Nobody.
Right.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
And we've got to have it.
Yeah, nobody disagrees with that.
Yeah. But I've seen it firsthand, being in the classrooms. So I, I know for a fact, it's, I'm a strong proponent of mental health.
Yeah, I don't think anybody on this board, anybody in the buildings even, think that we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying, if we did not provide that, that's a service that could be or should be possibly held for, for the, at a county level.
Well, my point is, I'm wanting to make sure that it's on record that we've lost the funding source because of all that's happened. We've picked it up, and it's something that's very important, and as the commissioners are considering how they're going to fund us. That's my point.
That's it. And the total was the three hundred and sixty-one thousand that's over there, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And that amount accounts for four individuals that we have that primarily oversee mental health.
So how do other counties get DHHS to pay for those?
It varies by county. Some counties do not, other, other counties do. How, how they can do that, I'm, I'm not sure. But most counties have had to go from within and use local funds to be able to pull this off. There are counties that the county does provide funding to the school system to do this. Another thing that I think is important for us to talk about, because this is a service to the district, is our pre-K program. We are one of the few five-star pre-K programs in the area. We do serve about two hundred and fifty students in our pre-K. About twenty-five and a half percent of the overall program is supplemented using local funds, which is a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Also think it's important to know that those two hundred and fifty students do not count in our ADM. So when you look at the amount of students that we have in our schools, that's never a number you're going to see because the state doesn't count those students. But we are serving those students.
So we pay for the services they use?
We, we do. We, we are supplemented...
Okay.
...by the state in NC pre-K. But we have to supplement each year a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is an investment, and I think it's an appropriate investment. But I do think it's important to know that, you know, that's one more use of local funds that goes to a service to our community.
I think, I wonder if it'd be worth asking a question of the county manager even, or whoever, if, if this needs to be separated out. You know, so obviously, they fund the, the K-12 school system, they fund CCC. And I wonder if that needs to be a third-line item for NC pre-K? Just because while we run the program, it's not, it's not counted.
And again, that's not unlike the mental health, which we all agree we need.
Oh, we need those, yeah.
Absolutely. Nobody's arguing that. I want to make that part very clear. But what I did ask Dr. Dawsonbach to do, and he's going to get to that eventually too, is the resources and the things that we do provide, that's not required, that could have been done through a county level. And that included our, our social services, our, the mental health part, and now the pre-K. And I just think those are things that the community needs to be aware of. And also, when we are provided dollars for the schools, it's not just for, that, those dollars also go to charter schools and stuff like that as well. So that, that's the only reason he's breaking it down like this. I don't want anybody to panic.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I, I think the, the information we received at our board meeting from Dr. Kelly and Ms. Clark that showed the kindergarten check-ins, I mean, that shows the necessity of a pre-K program because kids are coming into kindergarten way behind. I mean, is that a fair assessment?
It is a fair assessment, and there's plenty of data out there that shows that students who go through a pre-K program perform better, not just in kindergarten, but throughout school.
So just to make sure I'm correct on this, when we received two million dollars last year, and then there was with, after inflationary cost and all those other expenditures, and we had, what, about four hundred thousand dollars left? Well, from just two items here, I'm looking at it...
We're in the hole.
Yeah, we're, and I'm just wanting to say that to be on record, again, to say that to anybody and everybody that, well, this is what we're up against when, oh, we've got all this money given to us, but yet we've got these things that are popping up, and this is over quickly, one ninety-three and five, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars already, just over those two items.
I'm doing a tally over here to the side, yeah.
Okay, what's your number?
Oh, I've not added it up yet.
Okay.
I'm waiting on charter schools to come, so I can pop that in there.
All right. And, and the reason all this is included is...
No, I'm glad you're including it.
Oh, absolutely.
I think there's been a lot of questions about where does all the local funding that we give go?
Yeah.
And I just want to show some examples of, while almost seventy percent of it goes towards salaries, the rest of it is not just floating out there, there are...
We're not careless with our funds.
Right.
We don't. Well, and I don't know if this is the right time, but Alan was going to work on something that would help me understand because, just, I'm sorry, the local, the buckets that we would be able to put money in because certain money has to come from somewhere and can only go into certain things. I think that would be something helpful, too, if you finish that.
And, and I probably should have said this at the beginning, the rationale for the presentation this way was because we were asked to make everything where the entire community can understand it in a clear basis. And that's not always easy, but what they really needed to know was the services that we provide that is above and beyond.
Yeah.
And that, and that, those are things that, if he can get this, and I like the way he's doing it, and let us know.
I don't like it, I'm sorry. It helps us as new board members, I think, also.
And then, so going back, just real quickly, like even when we had these slides, when someone said, "Well, where is that code?" If, if your staff's paying attention, those are the things that we probably need to have an error to the side, as opposed as someone having to go down and look up and back and forth. We want to be just as clear and transparent to the entire community. They don't have to look up codes, they don't have to do that. They need to understand where we're coming from and what we're attempting to do, with what limited resources we have. All right, go ahead, Dr. ...
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So another challenge mentioned is increased services provided to charter schools. So you can see the increase over time, which it was certainly not as large of an increase as we've had in previous years. And I think it's important, over to the left-hand side, that you see that we paid out for eight hundred and twenty-one students in various counties that are attending charter schools that would live in Lee County. And so when you take a look at our ADM, I think one of the confusing things is always, you know, that we give X amount per pupil. Well, you, you have to take into account, you have to add these eight hundred and twenty-one in that number as well because we're essentially giving that per-pupil expenditure to the charter schools over the course of a year.
And I think if I could add something to that, that I'm, I'm pretty sure is right, the kids that go to charter schools, the money that we send is state and local revenue combined, right? So it is just local? Sorry, I'm looking at Kelly behind you. So, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I was thinking that the allotment that we provided to the charters was all together? From the state? Okay. So state portion comes directly from state?
Okay, so that's all local money?
Everything that I'm talking about tonight is just what we pay out of local funds. And to get back to what Ms. Ortiz said, one of the frustrations is, once this money arrives to those schools, they don't have to abide by those same buckets and can use those funds as they see fit.
And so what happens if, I'm, I'm giving you a lot of hypothetical questions because I know what your answer is going to be, but I want the board to understand this. So what happens if you transfer those dollars over to a student who is in a, say, a charter school? And then halfway through the school year, they decide, "I want to go to the public schools." What happens to those funds, sir?
Well, we are billed monthly, which is a good thing because we, we are, you know, that, that does happen that we are billed monthly. So whenever they would come back to us, we would stop receiving a bill for that student. But there, you know, there are other ways that, that can get missed. I mean, we have staff that have to check addresses every month just to make sure what we're being billed is actually within our county lines.
So is that number, one point six million of what we paid out of local funds last year for charter schools?
That's, that's the anticipated amount for...
Okay, for the upcoming, okay. Well, I mean, it wasn't much less for twenty-three?
Correct.
Twenty, okay.
So, getting back to what I talked about earlier, this chart right here, I think, is a better representation of the county's overall ADM, which stands for Average Daily Membership. The numbers in blue represent the students sitting in our public schools, the number in orange represents those students that we are paying for in charter schools. So I think it's important to look at when we receive funding from the county, we can't just look that that covers nine thousand one hundred and fifty students, that actually covers nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-one students. So getting into my recommendations to the board, there are three: operational increases, full implementation of the Classified Pay Plan, and an updated supplement structure for certified employees. Taking a look at operational increases, which is a total cost of seven hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-six cents, you can see the breakdown at the bottom of where we, how we came up with those numbers, and that was also included in your chart. Just so that you know, where, what we mean by supplements, that's the monthly, the, twice a year, it's not a bonus, it's, it's a supplement that differentiates from county to county. We pay an overall ten percent bonus. A lot of our positions are paid out of local funding. So as the state raises salaries, that ten percent obviously is going to increase, so we've got to make up the difference using local funds. We are projecting here with what we think the state might do, because the, you know, if the state comes back and says, "We're going to give every teacher a ten percent raise," that amount's going to go up quite a bit. And so we try to build in a little bit of wiggle room, but we look at what's been done in the past and try our best to estimate what, what's going to happen there. So that is one bucket that I would request because we have to pay our bills, and we have to meet payroll.
And I think, I think something to highlight in the last, the very last piece here, talking about the step increase, so that's where, when the board did the resolution, when we did the pay increase, the resolution included, yeah, unfreezing classified staff pay, and that is that step increase value. Because I think it's said in that resolution also that we would have that as a line item on the budget, because I think historically that has not...
Agreed. So to Mr. Rummel's point, to increase that one quarter of the classified pay raise that the board did implement, to continue that next year, to not only give everybody a step, but to also assume that within that step, the state would also give an increase, which we have to account for. That's the amount that we feel it would cost in addition to what's already been allocated to be able to carry that forward. Full implementation of the Classified Pay Plan, obviously, this would be funding the remaining three-fourths of that plan, and the cost to do so would be a little over two million dollars. Now getting to the certified, certified staff updated supplement structure. So what this chart shows you is what Mr. Rummel mentioned earlier. This was part of the Evergreen Audit, and what it shows is, Lee County's ten percent supplement is within market value until you get to about twenty years of experience as a teacher, and then you can see that it's sort of in the red. Part of the reason is, the state, over the last, I would say, decade or more, has given larger increases to those with less than fifteen years' experience, and much smaller increases to those with more experience. So obviously, they feel the pain of a lower supplement more because their state increase has not been as much. And so our recommendation... And so our recommendation is a sort of weighted supplement structure based on your years of experience, and this is not years of experience in our district, this is years of experience in education as a whole. So those with zero to 15 would remain at 10%, and then every five years, you would receive 1% more in your supplement. I'm also hopeful that this would be a way to get people to stay, and hopefully retain some folks if they knew that you weren't going to be stuck at this same amount forever. The cost to do that with our current employees, and please know that this is a moving target, but based on the employees that we have right now and years of experience, it would cost a little over $450,000 to do this for one year. And just so that you all know, that would cover about 251 employees. So in short, taking a look at those overall recommendations, that adds up to a requested increase of just over $3.2 million, which is a total request of $24,723,993.38, which is a 14.9% increase over last year's funding.
So I got one question, because I'm not a math guy. I'm going to flip back to the front. Stand by.
Make sure you all still can count.
I thought about it, but I, I didn't, I wanted to save y'all that. So...
He knows I'm kidding.
Based off the chart on the, the historical funding by the county in their increased revenue over the last 10 years. So if, if they would have maintained, if, if the county would have maintained that percentage of the funding to the school system, then it wouldn't be this big of a hit, because the school system would have already had, well, right at 24 million right now in the budget, right? So...
Rick, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. Thank you.
You are correct, and I will have a different number for you at the end, so you can all see what percentage of the budget we are going to, like, or what I'm going to recommend that we ask for.
I had one more request before we move on from that. So I know last year, we had broke, well, actually, I think when we talked about the Evergreen Pay Study, there was the Classified Pay Plan, there was the Certified Employee Structure that we just talked about, but there was also a pay plan adjustment for, essentially for central office staff. I think that needs to be included in here, and if we're talking about priorities, I'm fine with that being the, the bottom priority, but I know there were some folks in that staff group that were significantly underpaid, given their positions and their responsibilities, and I don't think we need to lose sight of that either as a board.
And, and just as a reminder, so there were four overall recommendations from the performance audit that came out. One was to adjust classified staff pay, which we've talked about tonight. The second was to move to a tiered structure for supplements, which we talked about tonight. Third bucket was actually a recommendation to redo the stipend structure for school administrators, which was principals and assistant principals. And then the fourth recommendation is what Mr. Rummel spoke to were adjustments to central office staff. So those were the four buckets that were all recommendations of the performance audit.
Because I know, we've probably talked about this before, but whenever you guys redid the restructuring, how many people were cut to consolidate or...
Have to go back and look, but I know it was probably six to six or seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad you reminded me. I actually, I forgot about the, the principal structure. I think, I think we need to list that one in here, too, because I think by county, if I'm not mistaken, they were far under peer group, right?
They, they were far under peer group, and let me address, maybe not an elephant in this room, but maybe an elephant for people watching, because I know what was blasted all over the front page of the paper. I think it's important to know that very little of a principal's salary is paid out of local funds. A principal's salary is paid by the state, and their salary is based on the performance of their school. The state pays principals in three different buckets. Your either base pay, your school met growth, or your school exceeded growth. And there can be a $15,000 a year difference between how your school did over one year or the next. And so I know that when salaries were printed in the paper, there were some folks that were upset that, you know, felt like we were paying principals too much. Number one, I disagree, but number two, I think it's important that we understand that that is money that's given to us by the state, and it's based on their performance as they school.
And I think it comes back to clarifying, you know, where does the money, you know, where is it coming from? Who's paying what? And, you know, what are the money that's, you know, allocated to us from the county? Like, all the different buckets.
So do we feel like this recommendation will appropriately address the reduction in attrition? I mean, I think we know that our attrition rates are much higher than comparable counties, and that deeply concerns me. Do we feel like this is going in the right direction to address that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Is it enough? No.
But if we just get there, then we can build from that, but we've got to get there.
But I do think it's a step in the right direction, especially with classified staff, which you all see each month is where we have the highest number of vacancies.
I guess I would ask that question of the board. Are you guys okay with adding back in the, the principal recommendations and central office recommendations that were in that pay study? And again, I'm, I'm fine with listing those in priority order and putting those probably fourth and fifth, I guess. I'm open to thoughts, obviously, with that, but I, I think those things need to be in there.
Have we self-corrected any of those things that were done there under the performance audit? Not internally? Okay.
No, ma'am. I, I would not adjust principal or central office salary without board approval. And, and just so that the board knows and the public knows, because I think all central offices across all school districts can get a bad rap, I think it's important to know that around 65% of the staff at central office are classified staff.
Alan, I'm good, whatever you want to add, man.
Yeah, just, I think it's needed.
Did the priority right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So to make sure I'm correct, your priority number four would be the principal or central office?
Principals four, I think.
Yes, principals.
Not that we don't care about central office, but hey, principals on the battlefield, you know what I mean? They're back there looking at me bad, yeah.
So moving into capital, if everybody is okay with that, of course, capital are projects that are under half million dollars that we feel like we can do in the course of a year internally. Our historical allocations for capital funding is there on that first chart, and we did receive an increase of just over $600,000 last year, which, which was very much appreciated by the county. There are four different buckets that we will look at: projects, furniture and equipment, technology, and vehicles. So when you take a look at projects, and just so you know where this information was gathered, every school in the district met with their school improvement team, which is made up of teachers, parents. They submit a recommended budget. We then review that at the central office along with Maintenance Department to determine which of these projects, because obviously, we can't do everything in the course of a year, but which maybe take precedence over the other. We have listed those in priority order. We did bucket all of those in number one as things that we feel are a safety concern, which is why they are all number one. So I will not necessarily read those to you, but you can see projects are $990,500. And you can see a brief description of each of those.
Did we need to add the leasing your visitor's side bleachers to this one?
We do. It, it's in here, just in a different, different bucket.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
It's right here. It would fall under equipment, just with the, the budget code. So with furniture and equipment, we do need to replace the cafeteria serving lines at three schools, East Lee, Wesley, and Southern Lee. We did put the visitor's side of the stadium bleachers, which is an estimated cost of $368.5, and we had several schools, many schools, with furniture requests, and we included those in there as well. For technology, for the past several years, we have included a technology refresh of Why I think that is so vitally important, you all remember the situation we were in in COVID, lots of laptops were purchased. We've tried to be very smart about replenishing those in batches so that when all of those die, they're not all dead at the same time and inoperable, trying to be responsible with those funds.
And all testing takes place on those.
I do think it's important to also mention, thank you, Mr. Davison, testing in grades three through 12 are required to take place online using these laptops.
So for the new board members, if you hadn't picked up on it, the federal government and the state provides a bunch of mandates that we are required to do, but they don't actually fund them.
Unfunded mandates, yes.
And so, and also in the capital outlay request, though, we have that, too. We now, when we replenish, we turn in furniture, we sell furniture, and that's put in there as well. So we're, we're trying to be conservative, you know? We don't just throw away stuff if a desk don't work or something. They, they sell it online. Okay.
And the last bucket are vehicles. A couple of these will seem like repeats from last year, and they are, and I'll sort of talk about in the, in that in a chart. We did defer a few projects, because as you all recall, last year, we did have to do quite a bit of extensive work on the home side stadium of Lee County High School, of which the board decided not to ask the county to fund that, so we did have to defer a few projects just to make sure that we could fund those out of our capital expenses. So overall request, when you look at those buckets, is 2.2 million 89,000, which is about a 4.7% increase over last year's request. This is a breakdown of capital funding that we have this year, because I think it's important for this board, the county commissioners, and the public to know how we are doing with spending that funding. So about 34%, and you can see that dollar amount of projects are complete that we had put on paper that we wanted to do this year. You can see the amount in red that are in progress, those that we have not yet started, but keep in mind, it's only February. And then the percent that were deferred, and again, that's to account for the Lee County High School stadium, not the visitor's side, but the home side that was completed last year.
Dr. Dossenbach?
Yes, sir.
I just have one question before we move forward. The capital outlay projects, will that number change once the, the assessment comes back that y'all are doing for all the schools and properties?
It, it very well could.
And will it change? Or would the numbers be available before the, the final budget?
I do not believe, I think it would take quite a bit of time to get those assessments done. The board has to review the RFQs at the next F and T meeting, and then I don't recall the amount of time that it's going to take to go into every school, but it's, it's likely going to take six to nine months for that to happen.
So it'd be a next year budget item?
So we would likely be looking at next year, being able to utilize that study to drive this report.
Thank you.
That's if we can afford to even do this study, because we have no idea how much it's going to cost.
Well, being at the county looks after the building supposedly, maybe the county needs to fund the study.
Well, well, just saying.
Thank you.
Just saying, yeah.
I also included in here a lottery spend-down proposal. One of the things that we were asked is, you know, why are we holding such a large balance in, in lottery? And we just feel that that's important in case there is an emergency. But the board committees, F and T, did request that between both of the two lottery funds that we have, that we try to keep at least a million, and so this spend-down proposal does that. Of course, as emergencies arise, these projects could certainly change, but these are our plans over the next several years of how we will utilize lottery funding.
Those funds can only be spent on?
Those funds can only be spent on projects where students are in the building. You know, there might be a little wiggle room, but very little, so we can't necessarily use that on stadium cost or things like that.
Or salary.
Or salary, because they have to be, it's, it's all building and materials.
Yeah, and that's a common misconception, and want to just say it out loud again.
And I think it's also important to know, I think there's a misconception that we get millions upon millions of dollars from the lottery each year, and you can see that we, we are grateful for this, but we receive about $630,000 from one pot and about $400,000 in another, so we do receive a little over $1 million each year. So in summary, if you look at the current suggested request and the capital recommended request, that is a total of 26.8 million, which is an overall 14% increase from last year. And when you go back to the page that Mr. Gaster was speaking of on historical allocations, looking at the county's anticipated revenue, it appears to be right on track with last year. So when you compare this amount to last year's funding, it's roughly 20 point, 23.7% of that amount.
I went back, done my math while you was talking. And you had it in here already, but, so basically, we're operating at a 15% deficit?
Yes, sir.
With the current budget requested and what is allocated, so the school system's working with a 15% deficit?
Certainly make that argument, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I did include some references, and this has been posted online, so nobody thinks that I just made these numbers up.
Could, could we, with, with the references, Dr. Dossenbach, could we add one, the one that ties to the pie chart for the capital projects? I guess whenever we do the snapshot before we make the presentation to the county, can we have that, just, just the list, so if anybody wants to see from last year, the specific ones that we asked for, that way they can see?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To me, this is the most important slide, because I think it's important to know, I, I think the, my goal is to allow us to be seen as an investment and not an expense. Our schools are not a line item on a budget, and I know they do end up there, but this is an investment in our future. This is an investment in our kids. Every dollar that we put into education strengthens our county, it strengthens, strengthens our workforce, it attracts families and businesses, and it ensures long-term growth and prosperity. So I think this is important work that we do, and I know that we are not the only department that needs funding, but we are one of the few that impacts the future. So what questions do you have of me?
See, y'all, a lot to think about, huh?
Yeah.
So back to the guidance that I asked Dr. Dossenbach to do this, that's for the rationale to be able to clearly explain it to the public. Now, what I particularly like to ask both seasoned and new board members, when you're looking at these slides, is there anything that jumps off that someone would not possibly understand? And I'll start with the recommendations that I had, was every acronym needs to be there, like current expense, that's just one example. All the acronyms be out there. The clear slides, the one where you have the one slide where you go down and look where it's color-coded, I'm sure we can come up with a different color to put it in that pie chart, and I don't have that page in front of me. And then a synopsis of some of the alternatives. What is it that we cost, what, that we do? I'm not saying we're not going to do these services. We all know it needs to be done, but if we did not do those services, like some other counties, that those resources are provided because they know it's more cost-effective for the schools to do it. It costs a lot for the county to have a driver or social services or mental health going around each school versus us providing it in the schools. And that's what I wanted to kind of lay out for the community and the county commissioners. Now, I would like to say that, you know, both, both of these boards, this board and the county commissioners, we have a duty to work together. Our community expects us to work together. So I couldn't care less what I see in a rant, I don't care what I read about, no olive branches. The reality is, we need to work together, and I think maybe one of the things that would help is, and I do believe the five to five would be very effective. And I know I keep pushing that and pushing that, but I just want to remind you what's on those objectives. The objective on that, which relates to this as well, is discuss the benefits of strengthening the partnership between the county commissioners and school board, and we see how the effective collaboration comes together and it impacts all our educational outcomes. And you provide suggestions on how we build back trust or respect between the boards. I'm not saying it's not there, I'm just saying you can always build on something, you know? And it provides an opportunity, you know, that the students, the staff, and the community as well can see it in an open meeting. Now, some of the topics for discussion, because this is a part of the budget process, and Dr. Dossenbach was sending out a notice about the counties and the school board coming together again as well, but some of the topics we can discuss is the capital... But some of the topics we can discuss is the capital improvement plan, which would include like the bus garage, but also the funding formula, and how do we actually do the funding formula? Now, and it's just one example from different counties. If you see how Derrick County came together when they had the five on five, they had three members from each board. That included the directors, the county manager, superintendent. But some of the things that they accomplished by sitting down and talking to the county commissioners was being able to explain, if we don't provide the services, then you are going to end up with these services. And, and that, that made them, so how did that affect that county? Because we never really talked about that too much. It, it ended up that they, through a collaboration, they ended up having nurses in every school, and they were paid for under the DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services. Then the school resource officers came from the local sheriff department. And then they had colleges that were done with different areas as well. They had school-based mental health that was done also through DHHS. And, and supporting the college and the constructions and all those things, and they were allowed to get buildings improved and meals provided. So I'm not suggesting that we remove any services that we're currently doing. Does that make sense? Because it's very important for you guys to understand. But for the new ones, if you looked at this paper, is there anything that stands out and you say, I don't think I could understand that?
Well, I just have a question. So looking at the allotment that the other counties are given, so Moore County, for example, Chatham County, where they're allocated 34% and 38% respectively for those counties, and we're at 20%, why? Like, I feel like, you know, each county has the same kind of services. I don't understand why our piece of the pie would be so much smaller than one of these other counties. Like, what are they paying, what are they not paying for that Lee County's paying for to allow, like, one of them, you know, is almost double, what they're giving to this, or, you know, giving or allotting to the school board versus what's being allotted to us? Like, are there so many, I mean, I just don't know what other services or things that the county's budget is going towards that would take so much away from ours?
I don't want to speak for those counties, but just, a lot of that is the differences in salaries between the counties.
Okay.
Not all, but Chatham's supplement is significantly higher. The other options that they offer are significantly higher. I know that Moore County, when you look at classified pay, it's significantly higher. But as far as all of their funding, I'm not sure, but I do know that there's, there's a lot of difference between salary.
Well, and I think about it too, because, you know, we've all been to those counties, and I don't feel like they're lacking anything, you know? So to be able to give a larger percentage to their schools, I don't see any services being cut from, you know, any of those other counties that have the higher allotment towards the schools. I mean, is there something I'm not seeing?
I think that might be a good discussion topic for, you know, the joint meeting that we do, or the, the five on five plan or something to, to understand from their standpoint. Because, you know, it's, it comes back, they have decisions to make too, obviously, with their budget. So, yeah, I mean, it'd be a good point of discussion.
And the five to five plan also allows the opportunity to discuss multiple things that would cause a teacher.
I think it'd be a great thing, yeah.
To go to another county, you think about housing, okay?
Yeah.
And, and those are things that, that we all have to work together. I don't care how you, I don't care how it's done, because it's the best interest of our community. It's whether it's a bus garage, it saves tax dollars here or there, or whatever. But we, we've got to be able to continue to be focused on the education of our children above anything. And so Moore County was the one that was not on the list from the performance audit, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And he added Moore County because it's close by. And I remember a news article where one of the, they were saying teachers were leaving Harnett County to come to Lee County. Did you see that news article? And why was that? They getting, we getting, giving them more pay?
We, that is one reason. That is one reason.
And I would argue there are actually multiple, multiple studies out there that teachers' retention and satisfaction is directly correlated to their principal. People don't want to hear that, but that's the reality. My own daughter's a teacher, and she would stay for one of her principals because she's that dedicated to it. So I don't want to overlook the principals, like you said, too.
Just so the board is aware, I've crunched some numbers up here while you were talking and, and looked up. We'll have to revise the numbers, but based on the data that was in Evergreen, to add the two items that you wanted added, whether, which was the supplement structure for administrators and central office staff, it's a little over $400,000. If you add that to our total request, just so you know, the overall percentage, what that would increase to would be 24.1%, which is still less. When, when you add up the last 10 years of the percent that we've received, the average is 24.4. So it would, that request would still be lower than the average that we've received over the last decade. And I do think it's important to note that that amount is current and capital added together.
Now, I have another question. We have something that's, we can apply for grants called need space grants. That means the school needs space. So we, we can tell state, federal government, whatever, we got this need. And sometimes they'll provide us a grant. Yes, for capital. So I would like Dr. Dawsonbach, not to put you on the spot, but just explain what happened. Have we ever got one of those grants yet?
We have not. We have rep, replied, applied for two years. We have not received that grant. Some of the feedback that we received is based on the tax base and the ability of the county to provide the revenue based on the revenue that the funds went to other counties.
Our tax base is too high.
Oh, I've known that. I sell real estate, and, I mean, people are asking, what is included in this, you know, tax base? I'm like, well, if you're in the city, you get trash picked up, so.
And Cindy, I, I am, I'm so sorry, I don't mean to put Chris on the spot, like, it's just, you guys are brand new to the board, and I distinctly know, because I've worked and gone through the process with the grant writing, and when, it's very disheartening when you come back and you look that you have the same type of students, you make the same criteria as everybody else, and then we don't get a grant. We don't get a grant because the tax rate is too high. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no.
And so that's where, that's the point I'm trying to get across. I don't know what else we can do. So I guess we'll find that out when we have a joint meeting in the five to five. I just think opening up that communication would help.
Yeah, so for me, if I was going to add something to this presentation, I would add whatever we can share around attrition, right? Just looking at the data, because data doesn't lie, right? Maintaining top talent in our schools needs to be a priority. It is also what helps Lee County grow, right? People move here, and you know this, because of the school ratings. I mean, that's one of the reasons I chose where I live. So it's, it's really important, and it can help the county overall, and it creates that positive feedback loop of growth for Lee County.
And we have been talking about those things. But we just got to keep talking about it.
I'm new, so.
Yeah, yeah, we, but we just got to keep talking about it.
For sure.
And Alan, you got something? We're going around.
I don't. I think, I think I said all mine as we went through. Thank you.
Chris? Put your mic on, sir.
I got one thing. Talking about charts, it's easy for me to follow charts. I like the visuals. The historical funding page here, you, you've got it pulled up here now. If you can make a chart so the people could see the historical amount the county's getting versus what the Lee County schools has been getting. I think for a visual aid, I think that that would be a great, it would help people, instead of looking at the numbers, I think by the, a chart would be great. Thank you.
Well, and, I'm sorry, yeah. It, going back to, like, I think they need to understand that, yes, we may get X number of dollars from the lottery, X number from the state. Like, if there's something on there that shows, we can't spend that on salaries or, you know, those kind of things, just because I didn't understand that until I got on the board, and you sat down with me, and Alan sat down with me and went over the different, you know, pots of money and where it can go and what it can go towards, and so many restrictions. And then, like with the charter schools, you know, we can write them a check, and they can do whatever they want to, and, you know, I don't know, I just, there's a lot of things that just need to be out there.
And I think, that doesn't seem fair, does it?
No.
So if you just kind of raise your hand, I'll go that direction. Go ahead.
So, and that's a great idea, because I do know in some of our county meetings we've had with the county commissioners, because their budget is handled differently than the school budget. And, and they can allocate funds for whatever pot they need to put it in, so to speak. And then there is some limitations, I suppose. But the public schools are limited.
Restricted.
Or restricted to their pots. So anything that could help not only the public, but also the, you know, other lawmakers in the county understand how it's funded and how it can be spent, that's, that's great. Yeah, thank you.
And I believe Eric's next. Did you have any questions? All right. Well, my final statement will be this. You can invest, I think we, I think Chris hit the nail on the head that it's an investment. It's not an expenditure. And if we keep going down the route that we're going, if we don't invest now, and it doesn't matter whether you have kids in school or not, because I get this throughout the community, I'll have no kids in school, I don't care. Well, you should care, because there's children coming out of the schools that's going to be in our community. And if we don't get the resources that we need to properly educate these students, then you might want to start invest, investing in the prisons and the sheriff's department. Because statistically wise, the education, and we have 91% of our children in Lee County go to public school. So I, I just really want to hone that in. We are, we are not here, we're not this indoctrination center trying to take all your money. What we're trying to do is take good care of our children, and I would like to think that we're all on the same sheet of music. Does anybody disagree? Okay, if y'all don't have any further questions, I know we're meeting again, but you can read all these questions, and if you come up with something in, like at a chart, like, like Chris said, or you see something, so that would be clear to my neighbor if they read this, please just send Dr. Dawsonbach a note, and, and they'll make that happen. Does that make sense? All hearts are mine, happy? All right. If there's nothing else, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.